Okay, looks like we are ready to go. So we'll get right into our meeting. Doesn't look like we have too much in our gallery. I'll just start by recognizing that we are meeting on the traditional unceded territories of the Comox First Nation. And we are going to start with a delegation from the Vancouver Island North Film Commission with Joan Miller. So I'll pass it over to Joan. I'll turn your microphone on as well.
Does my PowerPoint go up?
Jake will get you rocking and rolling here.
All right, I'll start by actually recognizing everyone here and thanking you all for the opportunity for me to come back and update you. I'm going to really try hard to stay to my 10 minutes because we've had such an amazing few years since the last time I was here. There's a lot for us to shine on, but I recognize your time is busy and you probably don't want to hear me rattle on and on about what we do. So Vancouver Island North Film Commission, for those of you who are new to the board, our job is to attract and facilitate film production to the region. We began as the Campbell River Film and Broadcast way back in the mid-'90s, and for the first seven years I was their volunteer. It began to get busier and busier, and we recognized we actually needed to expand and become a regional organization because film doesn't want to go to one town. So in 2001, we created the Vancouver Island North Film Commission, went around to all the regional districts in our region, were approved by them all to be the recognized film commission. And now, fast forward, here we are another 19 years later, and we've had a busy 19 years. So this is going to be a little bit of an update of maybe the last two years since we last talked to you and the things that have been going on in our region. So 2018 was our busiest year ever. We had 99 leads. I was waiting for that 100, but it didn't show up till by the end of the year. But 31 projects filmed here. So the ones I underlined had some direct relationship with the Comox Valley. So Sonic the Hedgehog, and thank you to all of the regional district for all the madness I put you through as we were trying to permit highways and move a film around because of forest fires and paving. We just kept moving and moving, and you guys were so responsive, especially staff. I want to recognize all the support. You guys got the best staff in the whole area. So Sonic the Hedgehog filmed. They spent $11 million in our region. They set up in Comox Valley and they set up down in Nanaimo-Ladysmith. So the Comox Valley was the home for all of the work that we did on the highway, all the bypass. We also had what was called rain cover here, so we had three big sets here. But they filled your hotels and they went out for dinner, and they're very appreciative of the Comox Valley and all the support they have. The other one was Unspeakable, which was a really fabulous opportunity for us. We took over the hospital, St. Joe's Hospital, and we portrayed three hospitals in three different time periods. So we played Toronto, Montreal, and Vancouver, shot the CBC miniseries which aired, which was really came to great acclaim for the work they did. And the hospital, we watched every episode yelling, "Oh, there's our hospital! There's this room! There's that room!" It was fabulous, and the production company loved it. We also used the airport. The airport was just wonderful. They were so cooperative. We shot a commercial for Toyota USA, Forbidden Plateau. We did My Lottery Dream House episode here. And we also had, in the Comox Valley, you really felt the strong presence of a movie that we tried to, television series we tried to hide for eight months. Apple C built massive sets up in the Strathcona Park, and they built sets inside of the old Catalyst Mill. But the production was so large that we took all the hotel accommodation from Campbell River right through the Comox Valley. So the Comox Valley, we were busing a lot of our crew and our talent back and forth, up and down. So we were really, I think, when you have a check, we're still working with all our tourism partners. But in our region, we had the biggest tourism numbers through all of tourism regions in British Columbia last year, and we're really pleased to say that a lot of that had to do not only with our great tourism people, but a lot of the film production and television production that was filling hotel rooms all through the year. So those were the ones that were directly responsible for this region. Last time we spoke, we weren't even into infrastructure. We hadn't got infrastructure yet, but all of a sudden, because of how busy we began, we started to see people wanting to create infrastructure. So Vancouver Island Film Studios opened in March of 2018. It's located in Parksville, and it opened based on the fact that we had a television series that had been coming back and coming back. So that studio opened, and so we're now, you know, March of 2018, we are now 2019. We had two full season of Hallmark Chesapeake Shores television series in there. A lot of the people that are working on that crew live here in the Comox Valley, and they commute. So they were commuting our crew back and forth to the filming that we were doing, with all of the productions I talked about so far. So we've had a lot of interest, and we're in the middle of some really interesting development around new facilities. So we're currently working with the Colson Group. The Colson Group have found that the entertainment industry is a really great partner for them and all the things they're doing. We filmed at Crown Mansion. We're currently looking at their big Ballard, the Ballard 140-foot Minesweeper. They've been the hosts of a lot of our room nights out at Crown Isle. And now they've got plans to expand, which I'm not privy to talk about their plans. I'm sure you all quite would understand where they're going, but they're really keen to incorporate the film industry. So our production designers and people have been working with them to make sure that everything that they're doing moving forward also works for our industry and can continue to grow and attract in the Comox Valley. We have another facility that's looking at a backlog down just a little bit south of here, but it continues to support everything we're doing in the region. And Discovery Industrial Park, which was previously the old pulp and paper mill in Campbell River, has gone through many iterations, but it's now called Discovery Industrial Park, and we're waiting for it to be called the Discovery Industrial Film Studio because it did house Apple C. C's the big production. We were hiding for nine months. Apple has decided, since they own all the screens everywhere, they also want to create their own content. So they launched a billion dollars this year to produce content. They partnered with Steven Spielberg, with Oprah, and we landed the first of their big television series. So it isn't out yet. You'll see it air. You're going to recognize a lot of these fabulous locations. It's based 500 years in the future. It's not science fiction, but it's very much... The rumor mill is that it is basically going after HBO's Game of Thrones. So the budget on it was the largest television series budget ever in the world. It was massive. So they came and built massive sets. They hired everyone. There was a lot of money put into our entire region. They rented everything from one part of the island to the other. In fact, we had to make our way all the way into Alberta to continue to support the kind of needs that they required because they had rented everything out. So we're very excited to see that, what happens there. So all of our locals, again, were working, and all of our extras were here. My last time I was here, we talked about our big goal of creating professional development. We needed to train people. We needed to grow our crew in order to land all this. So we did partner with North Island College. We went passionately after the Ministry of Advanced Education, but when we started, it was called Jobs, Tourism, and Skills Training, and then we had an election, and then we now became Ministry of Advanced Education. We were able to receive funding. We got $500,000 to launch a pilot training crew, worked with North Island College and their trades department. We put 142 people that were already skilled people in carpentry, electric, put them through the program, and they've been to work now on all of these productions that we had. Majority of them now full union members because we had so much filming last year that they were able to get 100 days of work in our region, worked on all these different projects, and we're very proud of our crew. So on the side, we continue to deliver the smaller motion picture industry courses. We love our Comox Valley Youth Media Program. We work with them two or three times a year. It's the most amazing program. They're creating the best short, really timely videos, and we will continue to work with them. So we also had, as an example of what happened with our training, Chesapeake Shores, the very first season, they thought they would only get 0% local crew. They got 25%. After we did our training, they jumped up to 60% local crew. The four departments we trained in are all 95% to 100% are local people working on this television series, so we're very proud of that. We're now just about to finish Phase Five of our Labor Market Initiative that we got the funding from. In fact, I'm front of the Minister of Advanced Education tomorrow for three hours to talk about the results, how we did it, how we created a program that was able to train people, put them to work, and attract the production so they could find employment. We're hoping that they will allow us at North Island College to continue to pilot all these different training courses. We may come back to you and ask you. We're hoping that a few mayors or a few key directors will champion this in our region, maybe to go to the UBCM and really push to say, "This was really effective. This was short-term training. Our local colleges did great. Please support us so we can keep going to keep building this industry." And we are also working with Women in Film and Television, so we have our own chapter here, and we're currently in the middle of a program called Tricksters and Writers. We're bringing in Indigenous producers and writers, and we're working with 10 Indigenous women throughout our region, and they're training them how to tell their own stories and write in a script. And come August and September, we're going to be pitching those scripts to APTN, CBC. So we're really trying to bootstrap from the ground up and support Indigenous opportunities to tell their own story. So these are some of the pictures of our classes that we're training. These are our films trade classes. We're building sets, our production assistant courses, our set construction courses, and some of our local Women in Film and Television networking meetings. We have a great group of women in the area, and they're very supportive, and they're working together to try and support each other in getting into the industry and to mentor each other through different departments. So these are some of the programs we have going on, the Tricksters and Writers. So I'm involved in now in the Inclusion and Diversity Program, so I'll be heading off to do those meetings. We are working with the Canadian Film Commission's meetings, so we're very active, continuing to try and network and keep us as a leading region. These are a few of our other gatherings. So we have, I don't know if anyone recognized Daniel Koeman at the bottom, myself, Daniel, Matt. These are some of our key industry people that are setting up shop here. They're running their businesses. Daniel runs Unveil Studios. In fact, there's a big launch of his next documentaries at the CID coming up, and he's an amazing documentary and a movie filmmaker, and he's local, and these are all local people that we're working with. It's a real pleasure to do that, and some of the programming we're working on. These are some of the meetings that we're doing more on the bigger level, sitting in on. Last weekend, I was over with the Game of Thrones. There was Game of Thrones, Wonder Woman, Top Gun, all the key location managers that we're working with. So continually working with them to build, learn, and build relationships with. And our new meetings that we're doing, we're creating a Canadian Film Commissions Association across Canada. All of this coming together with training, infrastructure, all the things we're doing allows us to go out now and marketing full service. So now I go to the studios, and I'm not just going down there with a group and saying we have fabulous locations, which we do. I'm going down there and telling them, "We have crew. We have infrastructure. We have locations. We have tax credits. We have film-friendly communities," which all in all is a big sale, which I couldn't do before. I could go down and kind of talk about pieces. Now we have the whole package, and we're going to continue to grow it. So I'm doing a lot of marketing when it comes to opportunities with studios and clients. So these are some of the things that we did. Just recently, I wrote a grant. We're still in the grant writing business because our budget is pretty... We make the most of our small budget, but we do leverage every grant we can. I wrote a grant, rented a plane. I can't believe they said yes. And we had brought 22 key producers over, and we toured them from, we landed them at the airport in Campbell River, took them to the mill. We went to the tanks at Shelter Point. We went to the hospital. Colson's hosted us for lunch. We went through Courtney, Cumberland. We had a big day in a bus, and we roared them through everywhere, to the studio, to events, introduced them to all our people, took them right through to Ladysmith, where the Ladysmith Town Bakery at 6:30 at night came running out with their staff and presented everyone with a dozen sticky buns hot, which blew their mind. We know we haven't got the big budget, but we know how to impress them, right? It's food, food, food. So between Shelter Point Distillery and the whiskey tasting and all the... Someone got up on the bus and yelled, "Bring these people films!" And they were very thrilled. So that was a big day for us, and so we're continuing now, bringing more people over, newer people, to show them because we can show them everything now. So we've been working with our screen tourism partners. We've been pushing that for a long time. We've got a new CEO with Tourism Vancouver Island. We met last week. We're signing a memorandum of understanding. We're collaborating on screen tourism campaigns. We're doing a big one for Disney, for Sonic, for C. We did a big one for Chesapeake Shores, and they're recognizing that the power of the screen is attracting tourists to our area. So it's a really great collaboration that we're working on. So these are projects coming down the road. That was part of our 12 must-visit Chesapeake Shores filming spots. We have people from coming all over the world to come and see where Chesapeake Shores was filmed. That's our group down at the bottom on a fam tour. And a bus full of studio producers, and there we are up at Crown Isle, being hosted for lunch by the staff at Crown Isle, which was awesome. And I'll finish off with, these guys just won. So Unspeakable, that we're very passionate about. A lot of our local crew worked on it. They just won all the Leo Awards last weekend for Best Drama, Best Casting, and we failed for Best Location and Best Crew. We added that on ourselves. So that's kind of a little quick snapshot of what we've been doing and where we're going. The final thing is that our economic impact last year was triple anyone else in the regions of British Columbia. And I'm not even going to say the number because it was hard to... I don't want it in print. It was massive, and a lot of it because we had a lot of big shows. You know, we're looking at all the interest that we're getting from everyone to come back again, but we have to keep building all of our crew. We have to keep training. We have to keep finding jobs. And so we're very excited about the future of the film industry embedding itself in our region.
All right. I let you go a little over time because I think it was pretty engaging. Nobody was...
I told you, don't do 10 minutes.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, I think there's certainly some questions, starting with Director Frish.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Well, that's a great presentation. You're obviously a drama student yourself.
No, I'm not. I'm just very passionate about what we've done.
Absolutely, that's great. I remember the Hedgehog because I lived across the street from one of your sets, and I was amazed at how many people were working that night. And it poured rain, I think, for like three days. I don't know how you did it, but...
And that's why we call it rain cover. So yeah, we couldn't film on the highway, so they ran to the sets they had, and those were specifically set up that if it was raining, they could film there. They know what they're doing.
So I have a few questions. I have lots of questions, but I'll just rhyme off three of them. So I'm wondering about how you're funded, your budget, and what our contribution is.
Well, we're funded through communities, regional districts, and we have a regional contract with the provincial government. So our total funding this year was $165,000, which was the biggest we've ever had. We've run in everything from nothing to up to 165. But I think because we're able to have a better relationship with Regional District of Nanaimo now, and more regional districts are coming in, and we're having longer-term contracts instead of this year-to-year, never knowing what we're doing, our funding has begun to stabilize. So Campbell River gives $50,000. They have from the very start because they believed it as a regional, and they've stood up and said, "Film away everywhere," because they know that every once in a while, the big one comes and they benefit. So last year, with C coming into Campbell River, they benefited again. They've had them. So they've been our core funder, but Comox Valley, the regional district here, has been a core funder. We get $15,000 a year from the Comox Valley. Regional District of Nanaimo came to the table last year with $50,000. We just got a raise over in the Elberni Clay Quot for 10. So it has been, and we get $40,000 from the province of British Columbia to run an entire region. So we have one of the largest regions. We have 25,000 square miles. We cover most of the island, and then we go right up on the west coast to where the grizzly bears and the whales roam because we have a huge documentary season that we're heavily into. So we run this year with everybody that approved. We had $165,000 to market, to do everything, and that's two full-time employees, our office. I drive a lot. I'm up and down the highways till midnight every night because we have a big region and we have to make it around there. I leave at 5:30 tomorrow morning for Victoria, get home late at night, but you know what? It's just part of what we do when we live in an amazing area. You make it where you have to.
Yeah, I know you didn't want to say the number, but what about the Comox Valley? Do you have any idea what sort of spin-off economic impact there is for our pick-up region?
For what it was this year? You know, I truthfully don't because it's been so screaming busy, and I'm still waiting for C to give me my numbers. That's why I didn't want to really release it. We have a really vaguely, closely vague idea of the impact they had in the region, but it's really difficult for them to start breaking it out when they're filming around and around. So I know that was $3 million on the highway section up here with that portion. I would say that, you know, we can go back and look at Unspeakable. They probably spent $500,000 while they were here. But it's a really hard thing. We don't sign their tax credits. The province of BC signs the tax credits. They get all the details. They cannot release the details. They only release one number a year as to how much filming went into the province because productions don't like to give out. Some of them don't like to. C has said to us, because it was a big journey with them for almost a year. We did an awful lot of crazy things to help them get through. They're breaking it all down for us right now, and once we get that broken down, they've said we could release it. So that number alone is going to be massive. But it's very difficult for me to release someone else's information when I sign a non-disclosure agreement. I'm kind of caught till the studio says, and sometimes they tell us you can't release it, so you can only release one person's piece. So I would love to say the number, but until I get my numbers back from C, which has just wrapped this season, then I hate to have something floating out there that I can't stand by.
Well, thanks for that, Joan. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And we have in-camera stuff where we have to be secretive about stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I would tell you in camera. I still want it.
Wow. Well, we can always...
I just don't want it on the front page, on the local papers. Nothing against the local papers.
Next time. Next time, we'll have an in-camera section. Counselor, well, sorry, Director Cole Hamilton.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for your just passion and commitment to this. This is really, really, really good news for the North Island. I was just wondering, you're obviously been partnering with a lot of different institutions and organizations, and I was wondering if, given how much economic development you're generating, if you've been able to set up good relationships with C-Veds to sort of work on economic development coming out of the Comox Valley area.
We actually just talked about that in my meeting with Scott, and I reached out to C-Veds to ask them if they would come down and participate in our Inclusion and Diversity Roundtable because we're trying to find out from economic development offices, from our employers, what are the things government could do. They asked me to help set it up. What's kind of training? What are the kind of things they can do to allow the diversified cultures to work in our industry, right? So we're reaching out more and more, but we have, there's been so many changes with so many economic development models, and we've been kind of flowing through them all and from Nanaimo in and out into the regional district to Campbell River change, that it became much easier for us just to work directly through our funders. Because I have 23 communities, I can't keep up with all of those meetings. I can't keep up with every Chamber of Commerce. I can't keep, I even cannot keep up with the schools. We try really hard. So now I'm actually reaching out to our industry people. There's so many people moving to this area, and Comox Valley is becoming a real hub, attracting people that came up here to film. And even after C, I have five key department heads that came back and bought in the Comox Valley. So now I can reach out to them. They're still traveling to Vancouver to work, and they're kind of embedding themselves here because they see a lot more opportunity from stay here to work. But I had some of them go recently and speak at Highland because we had, there was like two separate hours of people signed up that wanted to learn more about opportunities in the film industry. I was off somewhere else with clients, so I'm now reaching out to our industry people and having them go speak. So that's kind of the answer. It's been really different. I can't, I don't have enough time now anymore to go and individually work with every single economic development, every single tourism organization. I've been trying to go more top-down where I can, you know, feel that the time is... But we reach out to every single one of them. Boy, when we need help, I am not afraid to dial anyone at 11 or 12 o'clock at night, and they all know that, too. I have all their phone numbers. When I need help, I reach out to them, and they're all great about doing it.
Excellent. No, that's great. I don't see any other questions or comments at this point, but I just wanted to say, you know, I did reach out to you when I first moved here 16-odd years ago. As I, you know, in a previous life, used to teach lighting and sound at UVIC and really see the value in it. And I think seeing just how it's developed over the last 16 years that I've seen it is absolutely amazing. I know when Sonic the Hedgehog was filming, we were also doing Rib Fest, and I got asked to try to invite Jim Carrey to it, and I tried to explain to everybody that he was a vegetarian, so...
And I keep, he didn't even come to Vancouver Island.
Yeah, yeah.
And I kept, everyone kept asking, and there were sightings of them at the Fanny Bay Inn, and everybody was going to the Fanny Bay Inn to see you, and I thought, "Let him go."
Yeah, exactly. Well, and see, that's the spin-off that I think doesn't even get recognized, is if people think there's a chance of seeing somebody somewhere, they'll actually go there, so...
Well, we had Jason Momoa here for quite a few months this summer, and actually, because of the fact he's Aquaman and he was everything, there was, he was really good. We weren't allowed, I wasn't allowed to, my time, I spent my evenings killing stories.
Yeah.
Apple would phone and say, "Get us down. Get us down." They, they're so invested in this launch of this show. So next year, and I have to say, our guys from Czech TV and CTV, they all understand. We work really closely with them. When we can give them a story, we will, but when we can't, they don't. And that's how amazing our area is. They kept it all quiet, and so we're going to do everything for them once the show launches so that they can now get, they promised me stories and things like that. But they all understand, we're all trying to create economic impact and jobs, and a three-minute story that could harm us somewhere down the line isn't worth it, and they get it. So we have the greatest group of people to work with here.
That's great. The last comment, and I do see another question here, but the last comment I was going to make is, especially if at some point you do have some information that's more fulsome, it might be better, because, and again, hearing your capacity to talk to everybody, we could actually have an elected officials' meeting where it's not just the CBRD Board, but it could be any elected official from the Comox Valley could come. And we actually work with the Comox, or sorry, the Campbell River folks from time to time. So we might even be able to do a bigger meeting at some point to, so you could come and give this information. So it's just less people you have to talk to.
No, it's great. And I have to say, though, it takes these, we need all these advocates. We're going to need you moving forward. We're going to need your voices to talk to government because this program that we just completed was so successful. We have all these other regions of BC now phoning and wanting it, but we want to continue with it. We piloted. We did all the groundwork. We collaborated. We worked with our local schools. North Island College bent over backwards without any real commitment that we were going to ever get the funding. So we want to maintain the progress we're making. We want to look at greens, and we want to look at all the things they're teaching at the college, and we want to be, and things that, skills that people have. We want to give them that extra modular of how to take their skills and work in our industry, and we want to keep building. We've put in 25 years to get here, and while everyone's chasing it, we don't want to give up where the kind of the momentum that we're on right now. And that's due to hard work from everybody and all the communities buy-in and being really film-friendly communities. That makes a huge difference as well.
Excellent. I'll give a last word to Director Frish.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I wanted to ask about, was this funding for the film program. Was it through NIC?
Yeah, it was through, we had a labor market. At the end, we got it the day before the RIT dropped. So we had some really great buy-in from a couple of really strong ministers, and I will recognize them, Shirley Bond and Michelle Stillwell. They got what we were trying to sell. They got job creation. They got trades and the money that they'd invested in previously in training people. So they got how it correlated. So we received a contract the day before the RIT dropped, and we actually, there's five phases to labor market initiatives, and we just jumped into Phase Four. And it was pretty dramatic because now, we now learned what one, two, and three were all about. That's all the work you do to get to implementation. So we jumped into implementation. So we had to spend a summer, four months with our, you know, roll up our sleeves and write curriculum and make sure the industry agreed and have industry instructors and find the equipment and bring trailer loads of, it was really interesting. But they made it happen, and everyone made it happen because everyone did their part, including, you know, getting the trailers on, the ferries, and doing all the things. So it was really nice to say that it was an initiative that was really, you know, grassroots-driven. It's getting, I'm getting phone calls from Ontario now wanting to know how it was done. And it's all great to have that recognition. It was successful, but that's not what it is about for us. It's about continuing. We found, we figured out a way. We figured out how to do this, and we want to keep doing it.
So are you saying we have the training capacity in the valley right now and that might be ending?
Well, it was a pilot, so the funding was only there to run the pilot. So tomorrow, we're doing, and all the years that the government's been doing these labor market initiatives, no one has ever done Phase Five. Think about that, like 25 years of giving money to do labor market initiatives, which have been thousands of them. We said, "Well, we'll do Phase Five. We will do review and recommendations," and we've done it in the last eight months. And we're doing that tomorrow because we believe so strongly in it. We want them to recognize that this was a huge success, and we want them to continue to look at opportunities for us to expand and grow our training, and we want to keep the training going on in our own region.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if there's an opportunity for the board to support that.
That's what I was mentioning. We need to come back from Phase Five meeting tomorrow in three hours and then wait for, to see what the Ministry of Advanced Education says. And, you know, if they're like, "Well, this was great. It was really nice, so thank you very much." That's one thing, but we don't, we're not a "thank you very much" kind of crowd. We're a, "This was really effective. We found a way to make people train and get jobs. It's attracting, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars' worth of economic impact. We don't want to quit here." So that's where we will come back to all our strength, which is all our advocates and people in our, in all the regional districts to say, "We felt the benefit of this. Please, we need your voices to talk to government, to say, 'We want to continue with this training. We want to continue supporting these types of short-term opportunities with long-term things.'"
Yeah, maybe you can follow up with our chair, and maybe you're going to do it with the other regional districts anyways. Let us know what kind of support you want from us.
We are not afraid to ask for support.
Excellent, yeah. Letters to support are great, and I think you even mentioned if there's opportunities for having some talking heads go. Most politicians like to talk, so...
Yeah, we figure UBCM is a great spot to have a group of people representing the entire region that can speak to the value of this because it is jobs, it's training, it's economic impact, it's all the things government says they want.
And, and one of the things, do you know if there's a workshop or an event planned for it at this point?
No, but the mayor of Parksville asked me last week. I mean, they felt it, everybody's been feeling it, and they said, what can we do as well? And so I'm looking for someone to lead mayors and regional district chairs, so they would get together with us, and so they could kind of create an opportunity to book. I actually went back and said, is there deadline for, you know?
Yeah.
For actually asking the ministers if you could have a group come in?
Yeah.
And so I was waiting for that, like, what is your deadlines? How can we help assist you to create your, your speaking points to get in front of the minister that we need to?
Yeah.
And the minister, Melanie Marks, is awesome. She really does, but sometimes getting around all the government programming people. So we, we're pretty good at that. So I do know she has her staff showing up tomorrow to listen as well, because I got an email saying there's so much interest in this. They've changed the room that we're presenting, because there's a lot of people coming. More the better, right? We want them to see the success.
Yep. No, and even if there can't be something super official at U B C M, there may be an opportunity. We've had some success, actually, at our A V I C C and F C M of, of doing some sort of unofficial events at the, at the big event, but just without necessarily all the brouhaha.
We'll use all the tools.
Director Hillings, sorry, I didn't see your light. Come on.
Yeah, not to prolong the discussion, thanks Chair, but I just checked the website, because I was curious about who's actually on the commission, and I know that Mayor Leslie Baird is an ex-officio member.
She is. We have our meeting next, next week, that we'll all be together, so we have.
So clearly, she would be a good conduit for us to follow.
Yes, and she's a very big supporter. All, yeah, our board is made up, our, our voting board is made up of people who cannot, don't benefit from our industry. We're really careful about conflict of interest, because I can't even tell them the projects I'm working on, because I sign all these non-disclosure agreements. We're working on, I mean, C was like hundreds of millions of dollars, their show, their budget. They, they're careful what they're, so I can't share that. What our board does is make sure that we're, we're keeping on the straight and narrow, paying our, the bills, that we are, you know, staying within the boundaries of the Societies Act. We cannot charge for our services. That's a big key for you to understand. Millions and millions of dollars come in, we don't get a cent. We do all the work for free. That's what our certification says we have to do. It's very competitive internationally, and so they, they expect that, because we're a certified film commission, that those are, that's the way we operate. But our, we do have ex-officials that come, and Leslie's been wanting them to support the Comox Valley for a long time.
Fantastic. With that, I'm going to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Obviously, it was a very fulsome discussion, and move your seat.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Excellent. Thanks again, really appreciate it.
I got it.
Yeah, I was going to say, it sounds like I got about 10 things to do by the time you get out the door. All right, that's been moved second and passed. Next, I'll invite Bud Taylor up to the microphone, and I think there, you got the PowerPoint there.
I'm overseeing.
Excellent, thank you. If somebody wants to second that, thank you. And Bud, we'll pass the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Chair, committee members, the whole. In, on October 18th of last year, the intergovernmental panel for climate change of the United Nations issued a report, and they declared an emergency situation regarding climate change around the globe, around the globe. I just discovered the report the other night online. The second decalogue, ridership. Increasing ridership on public transit is, is a way to reduce greenhouse gases. So the second decalogue, which I wrote in 2013, was me, an overflowing cup, and the ink splashing on a page. Okay? I can't tell you exactly where the words came from, but ridership, which basically, the theory is, a train is a tree. When you ride transit, you are storing your carbon reductions as opposed to driving a passenger vehicle. These carbon reductions are stored in the transit system, in the infrastructure of the, of the transit system. For trains, they are stored in the track bed that ties the rails, the overhead, for light-rail trains, for their overhead lines, cables. The train cars, the stations, for, in vessels with higher occupancy, occupancies than passenger vehicles, buses, ferries, aircraft. So ridership on public transit is a carbon reservoir for carbon reductions. The second decalogue, the second decalogue, well, the first decalogue, of course, with the Ten Commandments. The second decalogue is a, a set of policy statements began in 2013, and have grown because of the threat of global warming and climate change, has grown into an unlegislated set of laws, of which the first one, the odd, the 11th one, the odd-even scheme of vehicle traffic decongestion, is something I'd like to see happen in the Comox Valley. The odd-even scheme has happened in, around the globe, in places like Paris, Sao Paulo, Beijing during the Olympics, and New York City. The odd-even scheme, maybe I can click forward here. Okay, and I'd like to see this happen as a voluntary process, a voluntary scheme. But basically, basically what it is, is the parity of your license plate, whether it being odd or even, the last two digits of your license plate of your passenger vehicle will determine whether or not you travel on interchanging days during the week on major thoroughfares in the Comox Valley or throughout B.C. to fight traffic congestion, greenhouse gas emissions and pollution, and accidents. The original, the original idea, the implementation of the odd, the, the traffic decongestion idea, rationing, traffic rationing began in Rome and was implemented by Julius Caesar, according to Horse Canada's report in 2014. He said that because he was irritated because of the congestion, the noise, and the accidents, he outlawed or banned traffic by horse cart from dawn till dusk in the city of Rome, in the Rome, the city-state of Rome. Because the mayor was very angry at all the things that were going on, and the council's mayor complained to the governor, and the governor complained to Julius Caesar. But he ordered, and that may have been his downfall, he made a lot of orders, so what I'd like to see happen is a voluntary scheme in the Comox Valley. During the Beijing, during the Beijing Olympics, China engaged in the odd-even scheme to fight the red haze, the pollution. They also gave a, somehow gave a three-month tax break to people participating by parking their passenger vehicle, vehicles on interchanging days to travel on transit, helping to alleviate the health concerns of athletes competing in the games. In 2012, New York Mayor Michael Bloomberg enacted the odd-even scheme due to Hurricane And just as, as a note, vanity license plates were considered odd-numbered, and the application there is that, in Paris, when they, when they implemented the odd-even scheme, many people don't know that zero, which may end in your license plate, maybe the last digit in your license plate is an even number. So the police in Paris forgave people that, instead of ticketing them, they just let them know that, well, zero's an even number, and that you may be traveling the wrong day, but that's all right. Here we go. Some, some benefits of an odd-even scheme. You know, I've seen a lot of information on the internet in the past two weeks since I discovered. What I first saw during the Beijing Olympics was the presentation of a, of a person with a dust mask because of the red haze. And then I learned of the odd-even scheme then, but in the last two weeks, I've seen so much information on the internet and in Wikipedia. I, somewhere I saw that it's possible to get a traffic decongestion of about 20% from implementing a scheme of this kind. But the demand by the IPCC is for a 50% reduction in greenhouse gases, so somehow we have to move in the direction of decreasing greenhouse gas emissions by at least 50% to get below a 1.5-degree increase in the global temperature by 2100. So we have to move in that direction, we have to do it soon. Transit demand will increase implementing this kind of a scheme. And the increased use of HOV lanes, higher occupancy vehicle lanes, is in the Highway Traffic Act of B.C. There's a paragraph on HOV lanes. So I believe the Comox Valley has the power, legislated by the province, to go ahead and go, and just move forward towards a scheme here, on your own, without a whole lot of studying it to death or engaging in a lot of written material. Okay, that's, that's how I'm going to call it. There'll be a reduction in greenhouse gases from, from this scheme, an increased use of electric vehicles, and the potential for international carbon credits, which you could use to fund infrastructure, possibly subsidize a tax incentive to citizens of the Comox Valley, possibly, in line with what Beijing did during their scheme and during the Olympics. And they also carry out the scheme in response to the red haze becoming too difficult for people to breathe. Some costs that I'm just threw out there, and I'm not, you know, just threw them out there. Your transit capacities will be challenged, so there's going to be a balancing act between capacity and demand. There'll be some growing pains. There'll be soft costs which aren't unbudgeted, for example.
You've got about two minutes left, but I think you have a lot more slides, so I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you. For example, signage. You could put up signage similar to the water restrictions signage. Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, odd-even plates are encouraged to ride transit. Tuesdays, Thursdays, they're encouraged, even numbers are, even number plates are encouraged to ride transit. And then in, and the next week, and you change off. And this is going to represent a significant investment in infrastructure, electric vehicles, which is ultimately the goal of the province. I think it's, is it 2030 or 2040 that we're mandated to go to electric vehicles? Two, two statistics I found over time, and from an original research document I prepared in 2010. The vehicle occupancy rate in North America is around 1.14 or 1.15 per vehicle, and cars are parked generally around 95% of the time, at night, during the day, when you're at work, whatever. I've already described the second policy statement or law of the second decalogue, and that is that increasing ridership reduces greenhouse gases, increasing ridership on transit. And vessels are carbon reservoirs. The creation of the Vancouver Island Railway will store carbon reductions in our transit ridership reservoir. It'll be a way, by trading international carbon credits, to fund the expansion or the rejuvenation of the E and N rail, and creating a lifeline to communities on the Here I've presented three questions I'd like to see addressed in the, in the near future.
We're, we're at 10 minutes, so I'll let you finish this part, and then we'll put the questions from the group.
Okay. I'd like to see a completion of a roadway transportation greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the Comox Valley. Identify municipal tax incentive strategy for a voluntary odd-even scheme to reduce traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. And how will we attract funding or the trade of the scheme's international carbon credits?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Taylor, and we do have a few questions, so Director Frisch.
Yeah, thanks Chair, and thanks Bud for the presentation. Some interesting ideas around the G H G emissions inventory for the valley. I'm not, it sounds like something that's kind of done, but I'm not sure if we've officially done a report like that. I know it's been contemplated in the past. And I'm, you know, all the, the odd-even scheme even, that's, I mean, there are other things like that. As you probably know, the time-of-day tax in London, I know there's, there's that going on, and there's increased license fees in a lot of other places that really curb the demand for, for single occupancy vehicles, and, and I, so I really appreciate, you know, what you're talking about. And, and I think it all does come down to that traffic demand management sort of mindset, where you're really realizing that when you build roads and infrastructure for cars, you're encouraging the use of them, and in fact, creating the demand. So, you know, a lot of times, that does come into our wheelhouse, especially with development, when we look at parking and how much parking we necess, we need to be provided, and whether or not there are those other opportunities like transit passes, or car sharing, or bicycle parking, and that sort of stuff. So I appreciate the, appreciate the information you brought forward today. And I know if you've looked further down our agenda, there is a motion that was actually kind of spurred on by Director, we'll have to see what his name is, Arbor, thanks, so I can get my thoughts together, about, about transit and, and reaching for, or aiming for a higher target. So you'll be pleased to know that we are sort of pushing for that sort of work to be done. So thanks very much.
When I began work on this project in Edmonton, the, it was 9% of daily trips were by transit throughout the, the city of Edmonton. And I think I saw in the, the notes today, it's, there's a target of, is it 3%? Was I wrong when I read that?
Ours are in Edmonton.
No, here in the Comox Valley.
Yeah, I think, well, I'm looking around, is it 3%? It's maybe two and a half even. So, yeah, and so I'm, I'm interested in, you know, aiming for a higher target. And so we'll hopefully be able to look at what are the opportunities and the costs to make that happen, so that people actually, you know, if we're talking about an odd-even scheme, for instance, I think it, it would behoove us to provide the transit options before we delve into limiting, you know, car traffic with that sort of scheme. But, you know, we, I think we want to invest in the transit before we start doing some of those other tactics.
Then I would have to say that building capacity and the demand for transit and the need to meet the, the situation of global warming has to balance out. And that we have to build capacity at the same time as we are encouraging people to move to electric vehicles and get in, get on a transit, on the transit.
Absolutely. All right, thanks very much.
All right. I don't see any further questions, so thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, for your presentation today.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, all those in favor, receipt. Any opposed? And that passes. We're going to get back into our regularly scheduled agenda here. I did want to just take a moment, again, just to thank Director Arbor for organizing the trip last week to, in F C M, to Robert Clich, M R C. And I think for those that attended, I think we, we had a very good time and a lot of cheese. And actually, I think I still have a couple of maple syrup bottles, because I was the only one with checked luggage, so, but for those that didn't make it to, to the event, it, it was great. So again, thank you very much for organizing that, and to staff for facilitating. So, having said that, moving on to the management report. Excellent. Any questions on the management report? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Then we have the Campbell, oh, sorry, Comox Valley, I almost said Campbell River for some crazy reason, Comox Valley Transit Management Advisory Committee. Excellent. Any questions on the minutes? Seeing no questions. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Next, we have the urban communities partnering.
We proceed.
Excellent. And there is a recommendation, but I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Dyson.
Thank you, Chair, and Directors. I can answer any of your questions, but just to say that this is a funding opportunity whereby we will be working with the Local Friendship Center to provide a program for youth within our community, and we require a resolution from the board, so that's why it's, it's coming to you at this time. And again, I can answer any questions.
All right, and Director Hamir.
So I was reading the report for the camp, the youth camp, and it sounds like a great idea, a great use of those funds. I'm just wondering if this is a one-time opportunity? Will this program continue, or is, is, are there other opportunities to keep it going after the, the funding has, has gone out?
The, the application or the grant that we will receive will be a one-time grant, but I'm sure the program will continue and will look for those opportunities. This is really the first time we've worked closely with the Friendship Center, so we look at building a relationship there that we can do programming in the future, whether there's grants or not.
All right. Seeing no further questions. All those in favor? Any opposed? And there's a recommendation.
There's a recommendation.
Excellent. Any questions on the recommendation? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Next, we have Community Services Operational Highlights.
I'm overseeing.
Excellent. And the staff want to speak to?
Just provided for information, the Acting General Manager, Doug DiMarzo, is here. He can answer any of your questions. It's just an update to advise you on some of the progress of projects that are ongoing within the branch.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions regarding the report? Anybody have any questions regarding the report? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, and that passes, and there's a recommendation.
I'm over the recommendation.
Excellent. Excellent. And are there any questions on the recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, and that passes. And now we have the activities for the year ending, if somebody could move receipt. Excellent. Any questions regarding activities, or lack thereof? I noticed not everybody's submitted activities, myself included, which, which isn't great. I know I got them written down somewhere, but unfortunately, they didn't make it all the way here, so Director Arbor.
So what have you been up to?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's, yeah. Maybe I'll come as a delegation, or an all-elected officials event, or something, yeah, I'm sure, something that would, would be suitable for my ego. So, seeing no real questions, all those in favor, any opposed, that passes. Next, we have statement of financial information. Excellent, and does staff want to speak?
Thank you very much, Chair and Directors. The statement of financial information, often referred to as the SOFI report, is a requirement of all local governments, and it's this time of the year that each of the local governments will be presenting them. It's a very valuable piece of information for the public to see where their money is spent in regards to contract services, expense and remuneration of directors and staff, and it's provided for your approval at this time, and it is a public document that is available with the publication of this, of this agenda.
All right. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed, and that passes. Somebody like to second that? Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to wake you guys up over there. All those in favor, any opposed, and that passes. Another new business, we do... Excellent. Well, you guys are on it now. Little bit of sarcasm goes a long way. We do have the reduction of transportation greenhouse gases, and Director Frisch, would you like to speak to this?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, so I, when it comes up, I don't know that I'll even read it, but we did, we've had conversations, we, when we set our priorities, transit definitely came to the top of the list, and so I guess I'm just really keen to learn about how we can do better on transit, and so this is the motion that staff helped me come up with, that would sort of guide them in, in looking into this sooner than later, and it obviously ends up pushing a bit of our decision-making off to strategic planning, but at least we'll have some more information when that time comes to perhaps contemplate how much it would cost to, to reach a higher target, and to see if we're willing to go down that road.
All right, and, and I think, I think our targets were higher than expected, if I recall, I know, I know you just turned your mic off, but...
Well, I mean, from what I recall is we're looking, I mean, we might have surpassed them already, or we're likely going to surpass them, and if, if we're serious about our greenhouse gas emissions, then this is a, I think this is one of the biggest opportunities we have in really reducing them as a community, so I think, I think the community would respond well to having a higher target, and so I think we should look into how we might attain that.
All right, and Director Arbor.
Yeah, thank you Director Frisch for putting together this motion, and I like that, you know, this recommendation concerned during the fall 2019 session, so I'll definitely support the motion. And it's interesting, I mean, I think we're all eager to get on that stuff while we wait for the sustainability card and all these other things, so I'm glad actually that we're keeping the heat on. I just passed on, you know, on the electric front even today, I found out one of the Quebec companies now has put out 100% electric garbage trucks, with 400 kilometers of range, so things are evolving quickly around us, and, and I think as we look at our greenhouse gas in the fall, I'm hoping there'll be a lot of interesting topics to discuss from the entire district in addition to transit, and I agree, I would support basically having that discussion in the fall as, as per the resolution, so thank you.
All right, thanks very much. And Director Hilian.
Thank you Chair. So I think this is a positive initiative, and I want to relate it to something that's upcoming, and I want to tie it into Bud Taylor's presentation. I know Bud, and I know that not all of his ideas can be realized, but I think that part of the interesting lesson of a presentation like that is how we might think in different ways about changing some of our transportation patterns, and we're gonna have a unique opportunity in the next couple of years to check that out, when the city of Courtney redoes the Fifth Street Bridge, because we're either gonna have one lane traffic, or no traffic at all going across that bridge for six or seven months, and we're going to have to come up with some, I would say, imaginative and effective strategies for moving people. And it actually presents us, I think, with an opportunity to create some different habits in the traveling public. We have the potential, I would say, to, to encourage carpooling, to perhaps encourage people to shop on alternate days, to encourage transit, and, you know, massing points for shuttle services, and all of those types of things, and maybe many more. So I think this resolution fits right in with that, and, you know, we, if we consider the climate situation a crisis, we may actually be faced with a mini crisis in our own transportation patterns, when that bridge is very limited in traffic, and, you know, we're looking at the potential of long backups, and, you know, businesses and other services that are challenged to do their, their work. So, yeah, I think it's a good opportunity for us, and if we frame it that way to the community, we may have a good chance of, of getting better buy-in.
Excellent, thanks very much, and yeah, I mean, we, we've certainly had some, some fairly rare opportunities through floods and, and, you know, the odd car accident, or stuck car, to sort of see what would happen if it goes down to one lane or gets closed completely, but those tend to be really in off-hours and for short periods of time, so, yeah, six months is, is certainly something that, again, I was busy Googling the odd even scheme and how it's been used around the world and in different areas, so definitely something that, that sounds interesting. Director Greif.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The more we look into all these initiatives, the more we realize that it's all about raising the level of awareness with the public. I think that generally the public are, are keen to do the right thing, when it comes to things like water conservation, things like recycling and diversion, you know, how, what's recyclable, what isn't, all that stuff, you know, I think, basically, it comes down to our communication department and reaching out, and, and we haven't done that, I don't think, since the sustainability strategy, when we went out to the public, so, you know, maybe this begs a bigger, a bigger question here, you know, what can we do? Because as I say, I think people, you know, they want to do the right thing, so, you know, perhaps, maybe not this year, because we've got a pretty, pretty busy agenda, and we've got strategic planning coming up, but maybe we could look into some kind of sustainability committee or sustainability strategy that engages, engages the public. Just, I know with the, the Special Committee on Solid Waste, one of the initiatives they're doing right now is how to set up a home recycling program, because people, you know, are still throwing their plastic bags in the, in the recycling bins, you know, they don't realize they have to take it to an MMBC or recycle BCD, or like, like we have up at Cumberland. So, you know, I think a lot of it's communication, we need a big communication budget on this stuff. I don't know, you know, where it would come out of, what pool of money it would come out of, but, you know, perhaps, perhaps the bigger question is how we move all these initiatives forward, and how we get people on board, and I think that, you know, we're missing the boat in some regards, because it's all kind of fragmented, so it, I see it all as, as, as one issue, that's all. Thanks.
And Director Kettler.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree that communication is gonna be a huge part, and just following up with what Director Hilian was saying, I think that the, the Fifth Street Bridge and, and its repair could be an opportunity, I think, to get a lot of new riders, if they could see that they would, you know, that the buses would be given priority, they would be introduced to the new system that's much like, like a lot of youth are used to with the Lyft or the Rideshare, I don't know what that, the locating system that we have, I don't know what the program is called.
NextRide.
NextRide, yes, so like being introduced to NextRide, which a lot of people don't know exists, and then I, I hear that we're, we're working on getting a tap function, so that people could just have, you know, tap their cards and walk on the bus, so making it easier for people, introducing people to that system and getting, just introducing it to them, I think, in general, is, is gonna be a huge benefit and a side benefit of, of the congestion that'll, that'll inevitably happen from the construction.
All right, thanks, and Director Arbor.
Yeah, it's good discussion, because I, I mean, all the stars are aligned, and, and I can already see Mayor Chair Wells announcing that it's been so wildly successful that after all, we won't have to rebuild the, the bridge, because people will be so habituated to, to the new system, and you'll have this huge saving, that would be a cool story. No, all the stars are aligned, because I think we've, we've already agreed as a board to increase the budget of transit significantly, now we're gonna consider a motion to, you know, to see if, if we had the appetite to go further, and, and thinking about it, you talked about the sustainability committee, well, some of those questions, I'm hopeful are, those discussions can happen at the Transportation Committee as well, the, it's such a complex name. The IRTSC.
But you have to move your hands like this when you say it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so, so I don't know if that's the case, that's a question, I haven't, I think I haven't seen a lot from the minutes of, of the inter-transportation, the IRTSC. But, but anyways, I'm really, going back to the main motion, I think it sounds like we've got general support for, for looking at it at the next strategic session, thank you.
All right, thanks very much, and Director Frisch.
Well, I'll just quickly respond about the IRTSC, and we are currently contemplating how we might create some permanent body or committee to deal with, active transportation specifically, I think is where our committee really wants to head, and I suppose it's something of a debate whether or not transit fits into that, I think it does, but I don't know how we'd work them together, but you're right, they should be contemplated together, because active transportation is, well, transit, in my opinion, is part of that, and, and they work together, so I hope we can resolve that in the next, in the near future, and I also just wanted to put a plug in for the tap system, I don't know if it's something that we can get on to sooner than later, it sounds like the lower mainland, or, I don't know, was it the lower mainland that's getting that first? It was in some report recently that I read, too, that it was gonna be unraveled, unrolled somewhere else first, but maybe we can, maybe we can put a bid in to be something of a pilot, so, anyways, thanks for the support from those who've spoken.
All right, thanks, and, yeah, I think that's been a pretty fulsome discussion, so all those in favor? Any opposed, and that passes? Recommendation, yeah, I was just making sure we hadn't done that part yet, there's been a fulsome discussion, but again, is there any comments or questions on the recommendation? See? Did that... Perfect, all right, ducks are in a row, all those in favor, any opposed, and that passes. All those in favor, any opposed?